Future Ready Public Schools in New Jersey. Elementary, Middle and Secondary School in the District.
Here.
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 Yes.
Here.
Watch here.
Here, Audrey. Here. Will you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now we're going to start with the Future Ready School film first, that is, the vision.
Well, first of all, we're very grateful for a full house here tonight when we talk about this honor. So I'm just going to set the table and then I'm going to bring the beers up. We're really integral in making it all happen and take the opportunity to celebrate something that really is a district-wide effort of implementation of best practice teaching and learning. Approximately five years ago, under President Obama, the Future Ready Movement on a federal level began. And just to kind of set the stage for what it was and what it was about, we were about to embark on online standardized testing. I think everybody remembers the name of that. It was actually in the 1990's, right? And so, in that, it was evident that there were going to be nationally billions of dollars spent on education as related to devices. And so, from the federal government and the Department of Education on a national level, the focus was to make sure that these devices were not just used for assessment and then put in a closet, that these monies that were about to be spent and what was about to be embarked on, these not just millions but billions of dollars, were educational resources and that our students should be used appropriately with our students to make sure that they were learning the skills necessary to be successful in an evolving world with new job markets and everything else. So that was the beginning. So Future Ready was a pledge to say that school superintendents, boards of education, we pledge that we are going to do everything within our power to focus our curriculum and to focus our educational resources and our financial resources to make sure that we were not only going to use this for assessment, but that we were going to embark on best practice teaching and learning. Future Ready New Jersey is really nationally in the forefront because they've gone one step further over the last two years. They've said that we want evidence of best practice teaching and learning and we're going to embark on a certification process that shows that we are using these digital tools, hardware, software, planning of budgets, making sure that the devices we have have the support not only on the front side with software, but on the backside to make sure they have the capabilities to be used in the classrooms. To go one step further, the focus was on best practice teaching and learning, to empower students, to gain evidence of student-directed learning, empowering students to be lifelong learners. So that's really the work that we are excited about. That's the work that we're passionate about here in Middletown. We've got great support from firstly and foremost, our teacher leaders. If the ed techs in the room could please stand up, ed techs, please stand up. So, these are teacher leaders. These are the teachers working together with the principals. If the principals in the room could stand up because they're the instructional leaders, supervisors, directors, district directors, stand up. These are the instructional leaders that have worked to implement these goals. And I just want to say that this starts with our strategic planning, our district goals, and then from our district goals, our building level goals, this goes all the way down to our HCOs because really the focus is on student success. And then last one I ask to stand up, some of our outstanding, is our Board of Education because we really are in the forefront in the state of New Jersey. We're in the forefront nationally and it wouldn't happen without the support of these people ready. So, without any further ado, I am going to turn it over to outstanding instructional leaders, Stephanie Heslin and Wendy Morales. And I want to say they are not only outstanding leaders in our district. Stephanie is a teacher leader and an ed tech and Wendy is a supervisor. Not only in our district, but statewide. They're actually on the State Committee that is evaluating all of this best practice and is working collaboratively with other districts. And I want to say the best thing about this for us is we have participated in conversations, in workshops, in meetings, at higher education. This is a movement that is supported by the Department of Education, by higher ed, and of course, Future Ready folks. So, we have had the opportunity to come together with colleagues from across the state and really get into deep conversations about what best practice looks like, about what we want our students to know, to understand, and be able to do. And it's really been a tremendous embedded professional development opportunity for us. So without any further ado, Wendy and Stephanie, take your time.
Thank you. Anything, everyone. Again, my name is Wendy Morales. I'm the president of the Arts and Technology for the District, also the task force chair of the leadership, task force for Future Ready Schools New Jersey. And before I introduce Stephanie, I would just like to say that we did not plan our outfits tonight. It was a little embarrassing, we should know.
Go ahead, Stephanie. I'm Stephanie Heslin, an ed tech at the elementary level, also as the chair for the education and best practice side of Future Ready.
And basically, just what that means is we're the ones that kind of came, helped to develop the process for certification, create the indicators, and also evaluated schools across the state to determine what level of certification, if anything, they get. Of course, you'd think that would help us being Middletown, but it actually is just as hard for us and we were not allowed to evaluate our results. So we were obviously, so it was still a very rigorous process.
Okay, so as Dr. George stated earlier, this all began with the national framework, which I just wanted to point out, the center is personalized student learning, which has kind of driven us these past few years with all of our goals and initiatives across the country. So this is what first attracted us and then obviously when Future Ready New Jersey came along, it only made sense because it again gave us the blueprint for exactly what we needed to do.
So, as we kind of went into this Future Ready New Jersey process of certification, it really pushed us to kind of focus and narrow down on these three questions. It can kind of be a self-reflection, where are we right now at the start of the process? Where do we want to be? What are the goals? Where do we want our students to be? Where do we want our teachers to be? What kind of learning do we want to be happening? And then how are we going to get there? And that's really where the Future Ready, because these frameworks, came into play. It really was, indicators were created, you know, for educators, by educators, plenty of our ed techs were also on the task force, excuse me. And we were really creating this because we're in the field with them. Like, we understand what students need, what the best practices are that need to be pushed forward into our schools, and that's really what it's about. And like Dr. George was mentioning before, Future Ready New Jersey, the process itself, has really put us in a room with districts from across New Jersey that challenge our thinking and that pushes forward. I mean, we have to collaborate with and share best practices and really just push forward together as a state. And yes, the banners are wonderful and it's a huge accomplishment to be certified at any level of Future Ready because it is a very rigorous process. But really, the most important part is about the self-reflection. It forced everyone to have the conversations and it gave us a legit framework and indicators to be able to make those conversations into change for our students.
Okay, so here are the numbers for you. So this year, we had 94 districts commit to this process. We had 265 schools that participated. We had over 190 submissions. That was hours and hours of reviewing with our teams. And those schools represented, at the end of the day, about 54 districts. Of those districts, 38 were bronze certified. That was 104 schools representing 38 districts. And six districts, one of which is us, were silver certified. 35 schools, we are 17 of those 35. And just so we have an idea of kind of the progression of this, we started last year at bronze level. We are bronze last year. This year was the first year that silver was offered because this is only year two of the program, so we just turned silver and of course, you can see where we're headed for next year.
And just to give you some context of what the process was like, so from our bronze certification of last year, we had to kind of create an action plan of what our goals were to move from bronze to silver because we needed to, you know, provide more evidence to the indicators to be able to achieve silver. So first, we made an actual plan. We implemented those indicators into our classrooms with our teachers and our students. And then we had to collect evidence with ed techs, with the principals, with teachers to show that we were doing these things, show best practices, and then we submitted for certification. And these are the three gears, or three themes with the gears that we had to show evidence of leadership, education, classroom practice, and technology. And this is just examples of some of the evidence we actually did submit. We had to submit a Google sheet with links to tons of student work examples, to examples of some of the things that brought links to our website, just basically showing our entire infrastructure, again, best practice, collaboration between our teachers, professional development. So we had to submit that and earn a certain number of points. We also had to submit a narrative explaining why we felt each school was Future Ready. And then we had to, each of our ed techs created a video for their schools. So there are 17 videos that are currently on YouTube that you can check out on our district YouTube site and you can just play the first minute or so of this. Just yeah, this is fair view, so Mr. Orlando, start.
Great mic.
Hi there. Wow. Mike's awesome. Come on.
Hear it, man.
All right, so it is on YouTube and I know time is at the asset, so we're going to move on. And again, this all resulted in all 17 of our schools, so we just want to once again give a big round of applause to our teacher leader. Now I'll turn it back over to you back.
I'm over here. I'm over here. All right, so Mrs. Russo is going to come up. We're going to hand out our certificates at this time.
Okay, we commend the following staff members for their professional efforts and leadership in achieving Future Ready Schools New Jersey certification for each of our 17 schools in Middletown School District. Middletown Township Public Schools once again exceeded the established requirements for certification in all three themes, earning us the prestigious silver level certification. While all levels of Future Ready Schools New Jersey certification follow an evidence-based process, expectations established for silver level are especially rigorous. Middletown School represents 17 of only 35 schools in the state who are silver level. It's a term of service, silver level, is the highest level a school can achieve at this time. As a result, Middletown Township Public Schools has the largest number of silver level certified schools in the second cohort of committed Future Ready Schools New Jersey districts. This achievement was the result of the collaborative effort made possible by the innovation, passion, and leadership of our students, technology, technology staff, educators, and administrators. Each teacher leader successfully partnered with their building principals and teaching colleagues to gather evidence of Future Ready learning for our 17 schools during the certification phase this past June. At this time, we would like to recognize and congratulate the following educators for their professional efforts on this exemplary achievement on behalf of the district. Wendy Morales, project leader. Jane Wilson, project lead. Wade S. Smith, project lead. Margaret Gill, Educational Technologies Specialist. Amy Lee, special. Peggy Johnson, special. Barbara Gennarrelli, foreign news. Juan Gorman, foreign media specialist. Steven Rocchiano, director. Stephanie Heslin, Educational Technologies. G. E. Iavino, Educational Technologies Specialist. Dr. John Carrigan, director. Lisa Lepinco, special media specialist. Lisa Lipincourt, Middletown North Media Specialist. Melissa Meier, director. Alyssa Miller, Educational Technologies Specialist. Steve Davis, Thompson Media Specialist. Sarah Raskin, director. Rachel Fagan, Thompson Media Specialist. Patricia, director. Chief Smith, Educational Technologies Specialist. Mark C., Educational Technologies Specialist. Jessica Shaw, director. Donna Stoglitz, Asian Media, Middletown. Juan Zapp, Heiselmore. Lauren Tuck, Educational Technologies Specialist. Steven Chudow, Thompson, Middletown. Tiffany Van Con. Lauren Alas, Educational Technologies Specialist. Lisa Redd, Educational Technologies Specialist. Dana Wessner, Thompson, Middletown. Dr. Patricia Cartier, Middletown Heiselmore. Hannah Jackson, Middletown Heiselmore. Michael Brown, Asian Media. Ariana, Thompson, Middletown. Castle Watson, foreign news. Travis Johnson, A2 Elementary. Michael Alain, Fairfield. Eric Paulson, Monty. Daniel Bimbo, Brown. Hannah Biddle, Middletown. Robert E. Bell, A2 Elementary. Matthew Perry, Rollin Elementary. Neil Yelley, Gulf Level Elementary. Steve Wilson, Ocean Avenue Elementary. Lori, Rock, Rockon Elementary. And Stacey. Ozai Elementary.
Oh, wow. Classic Future Ready. All right, how we doing in Steve picture? I think we knew it from over there. That's a place. Tom and the tall speed from the back. And we'll try to do three rows. Get in where we get in. Chris, you got us ranked. Yes, we need to move around. All right, everybody over here, you gotta get in over there. I'll tell you, for all of us, what's really missing is the kids and the educators that came to here. Some of our teachers have been to school night, some of our instructors have been to school night. These are the instructional leaders that let it, the kids, and make it happen. You guys gotta come to the back there.
I don't get it what it does. I don't know. Here you break hard. You have to dance in the food.
This is a big team picture. This is the new backdrop of my Twitter account. We are going to be recognized in school boards because that's the other major partner of this, NJIT School Boards DOE. So school boards is going to be a big, going to be a big thing for us. We are Future Ready. We are. We're going to have a big thing. We're going to have a rough week against the Buckeyes.
How are you? Hi, how are you?
Who heard we are? Okay, congratulations, absolutely. We've got, next thing, we're going to recognize board members. We learners. I can just tell you, we're 10 shape.
Oh, yeah. Thanks, Cam. Bye, guys.
We have three board members tonight being recognized as, as we learners, as life longers of our New Jersey School Boards Association Board Member Recognition. I had to write my notes out on this because this is pretty impressive. I want to make sure we get this right. So, the first is the new board member board membership award. That's what you get for accumulating at least 10 board members academy credits in your first three years. And Danielle Walsh, thank you for standing back. I'm proud to work for a board that models the model, right? Because it really is, we're modeling the model for students that, you know, we hope in our work as educators that we develop confident young people that aspire to be lifelong learners. And that's part of the success. And our board, we're a certified board, we're a board that's focused on reflection and improvement and works directly with the governing body and school boards to make sure that they know our path. And our board is taking that challenge very seriously and I'm grateful for what we're doing. So Danielle, congratulations. Leonora Kemenity, master board member, third level of certification builds on CVM to receive the MVM. Some people call it CVM and MVM.
I think I got my mids.
Certified board member. See, I just have to ask my master board members, you can tell me exactly their names. Members must have earned certified board member to accumulate 20 additional credits for a cumulative total of 40 credits. Eligibility will not be considered until a board member has achieved certified board member award and served for one year at that level, earning a total of 40 credits. Also want to point out, you must pass an exam covering board responsibilities and you must submit a portfolio. So congratulations to Leonora Kemenity. I'm going to say, showing Mickey Lee's master board member flag to Leonora because she didn't want to do this and refused to bring hers in. I think it's a photo op and it's not for children. And then, and then we have the highest level attainable certified board leader award to Joan Mendez. This highest level of individual certification of board member is certified board leader. To be awarded to a certified board member, you must have earned an additional 20 credits for a total of 60 credits from all the core areas and serve for a minimum of one year as a board county officer. Board members must meet all of the CBL requirements, certified board leader, CBL requirements. I catch on. Certified board leader requirements, get 60 credits, pass an exam covering areas of board responsibilities, submit a portfolio, serve in a leadership role for a minimum of one year, board president, vice president, so. Leonora also, I'm sorry, this is your second one and you're really catching up quick. We've now called up to Jones. Not only is Joan a certified board leader, but Leonora is as well. So congratulations as a certified board leader. Most important, congratulations for modeling the model for students. Thank you very much.
Okay, now we have a presentation on violence and harassment.
Mr. Renell, right? We are Future Ready. We're Penn State. Penn State, Ohio State.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Connor Renell. I'm the district anti-bullying coordinator. So tonight, we just got to go over a quick presentation of our harassment intimidation, bullying, self-assessment report, and also the violence, vandalism, substance abuse, weapons, and hippos incidents, which is known as the student safety database. So each year, the district, every district in New Jersey is required to report this to the DOE. So, the first thing we're going to look at is our self-assessment, and this is done by each building-level anti-bullying specialist. So every building has an anti-bullying specialist in it. In the middle schools, it's our SAC. High schools, our SAC. And in the elementary schools, it's our SBSS. And they have to sit down and they have to look at these eight core elements that the state gives our rule of. It has eight core elements and inside each of these core elements are indicators. And, and for each indicator, they have to sit with the school safety and school quality to determine if they receive a three, a two, a one, or a zero. If they receive a two, which meets all requirements, their final score will be a 52. If they received a three for everyone, they will get a maximum score of 78. So here are our schools' results for last school year. And this is something, like I said, it's a 36-page document that the state provides for us. It's very thorough. And we submit our self-assessment. The state then goes back and looks at all the other information from our SSDS that we supplied to them, and they make sure that it's reliable and they authenticate our information. So we can't just go in and mark threes for everything. We thought, you know, even if we didn't deserve it, we could not go in and do that because the state does have a system of checks and balances to make sure what we're looking at and self-reporting is also accurately fit, but reports into the state SSDS. So if you look here, you can see our scores range from 71 to 76 is the highest score. Remember, 52 is for a two on every indicator. So we well surpassed meeting requirements for every indicator that we nailed. Part of, one of the, one of the marks that they look at are the trainings and the programs that we provide for the district, our students, our staff, and also other community members that have interactions, significant interactions with our students. So last school year, we, as a district, conducted 241 trainings on harassment, intimidation, bullying, and offered 123 programs. Trainings are considered, you know, if you bring home, we do a monthly substitute teacher training. Part of that training, we focus on harassment, intimidation, bullying, what it looks like, how to prevent it, how to report it. So these are one-day sessions. That's what constitutes a training. Programs are more than a day. It's something to bring into the school, you know, the Red River Week is an opportunity for a program to take place. It's more than one day, it's multi-day. So district-wide, we had 241 trainings, 123 programs. Real quick, just, there's always a lot of confusion of what the state considers bullying and what we hear in the mainstream as bullying. In order for it to be considered bullying by the state code, it has to meet certain requirements. And I know this is probably difficult to read, but I'm going to kind of summarize it for you. It has to meet all of the top three. So it has to be motivated by basically an actual or perceived parent or resident. It also has to take place on school property, at a school function, or off school grounds. So basically, it can occur anywhere. Harassment, intimidation, and bullying, or the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights, is really the only infraction that a school is accountable for 24/7. It doesn't matter when it happened or where it happened. If it gets reported to us, we have to investigate and If we find it to be, uh, a hit incident, we have to take action. It also has to substantially disrupt or interfere with the orderly operation of the school or student's rights. So it has to meet all three of those. And then it has to meet one of the other criteria. So one of the other criterias are, a reasonable person should know under the circumstances that will physically or mentally harm the victim. Uh, it has an effect if insulting or demeaning a student or a group of students, or it creates a hostile educational environment. So it has to meet all the, the top three and one of the bottom. So a lot of incidents that get reported to us and we do the investigation on, they don't necessarily meet what the state considers bullying, but it is a code of conduct infraction. So we do treat it as a code of conduct situation, but we don't necessarily have to, uh, it's not an actual hit. So that's, there's always a little bit of confusion about that. So just real quick, we wanted to blow it out. These are our numbers from the last two years for, um, alleged and then confirmed hits. Um, alleged is if it gets reported to us. The state says if somebody comes to a teacher, a staff member, a PFA member, anybody that is a board member, an administrator, and they say that so-and-so is being bullied, we have to open up an investigation. Regardless of what we can or what we know outside circumstances are, we have to, uh, conduct an investigation. So these are all the investigations that we completed over the last two years. Above it are the actual numbers that were confirmed after we did the investigations. They met the top three criteria and one of the bottom, they were actual hits. So these are the two numbers, I mean, the two years' numbers, sixteen-seventeen, and then last year's seventeen. So things that we're doing to try to enhance the climate and the culture of the building, uh, we increased the number of SBSSs this year. Uh, so every elementary school has a full-time SBSS with the exception of four. They share, so we have two, two SBSSs in the split, like, two schools. Uh, we added an additional guidance counselor to the one middle school. Our SACs are continually looking to develop programs to better educate our students, uh, not only on the harassment, intimidation, bullying piece, but also, um, the epidemic of vaping that's taking place. Uh, the vaping that's taking place right now, um, nationwide. So SACs are always continuing to learn and trying to figure out another, uh, approach to try to educate our students on that. We brought CPC counselors into two of our middle schools now. That's something new that we introduced this year. Common Sense Media is right in line of future-ready, uh, certification that Dr. George was just speaking about. Effective School Solutions, workshops. We have a lot of peer student, uh, programs that go in, they push into the middle schools and the elementary schools, um, to try to educate on harassment, intimidation, bullying, making good decisions, character education programs. Um, and we're also expanding our life lines, suicide prevention, and that's what we're doing since grade. Couple of other things that we're looking still, uh, like I said, the SACs are always looking to increase the amount of presentations. They have a tremendous amount of resources available on the website. If you go to the district website, look for the SAC's website, there's a huge resource, uh, a lot of resources available there. And they also have a Twitter account. We're always tweeting out a lot of relevant information. Uh, all of our schools participate in Week of Respect, Violence Awareness Week in October, so that's coming up. Character education program, responsive classroom, that's really focused at the elementary schools, uh, this summer. I don't know the exact number, but I want to say ten to twelve elementary schools participated in responsive training, uh, responsive classroom training. So they're currently being implemented. We also have three elementary schools that are archiving a character education program called Choose to be Nice, which is just in, uh, Leonardo and Bush Lab, they started it and I think, um, for the class, we'll pick it off next week. Uh, so that's called Choose to be Nice. It's a nationally recognized program, again, about character education. So that's coming to our elementary schools. Um, and again, we're looking to, uh, increase the substance abuse awareness programs and our SAC webpage. So the other part of the presentation is our SSDS, which is our student safety data systems. It used to be EDBRS. It's changed the name, but every year, uh, we're required to report any type of incident that was violence, weapons, vandalism, uh, or substance abuse. Hit is also included in that, but we broke that up into a separate slide. So these are our numbers from last year, in the sixteen-seventeen school year. You can see that there, now, everything went down with the exception of the substance abuse. Um, but, you know, unfortunately, that is, um, you know, that is something that we're dealing with. We're trying to, uh, trying to, uh, take a multi-passing approach. Parents out there, we're asking your help on it because the vaping situation that's going on right now, um, that's, this is not a Middletown or a New Jersey problem, this is an entire United States problem that we're dealing with, the societal problem. Unfortunately, students, uh, you know, vaping is cleaner or not as bad, I'm not sure why I have that, uh, perception of it. And then there's also a lot of articles and publicity right now about the possibility of legalization of marijuana. So that's also kind of changed the, uh, perspective of some people in what they feel about marijuana. So these are all things that we're trying to, to tackle. We're asking your help if you have the presentations and we make, uh, resources available to you to, uh, please take them home and have those conversations with your kids at home because, uh, it's, it's, it takes a community. So we're asking your help on that piece of it. So these are just some of the things, again, we're trying to reduce. And as I said, all the numbers have gone down, the exception of the substance abuse. Um, you know, we're looking at all of these programs, the substance use, we offer programs at the high school, middle school, district-wide. Uh, please encourage your friends, come, your children, come, listen, get the information. Um, last, last year, a couple of the SACs and myself went down to Atlantic City, there was, we have police chiefs put on the marijuana symposium and they had speakers from Colorado and California, I believe it was, speaking about legalization of marijuana and what it affects the students. Kind of giving us a, we have to attack how we can approach that in the school system. But it's much different than anything that we've ever used before. Um, and, um, you know, again, like I said, we're always collaborating with the police and our family police chiefs, there's myself, a couple of the SACs, and the exception of the students. So we're constantly working to develop programs, um, and asking you to do your help as well. That's it. Any questions? Fight. Fight. It's fighting, so. District-wide. That, that, which, anything, anything that's school for you? So, own game, away game, in the hallway, at your school, on school property, you know, it's. That's good. Very good. Anything else?
We'll be calling it a good investigation. Is there a specific protocol to follow or is it a good strategy to follow?
What do you mean, is there, uh, there's protocols to be followed? I mean, there's timelines. We go, we actually just had MJPSA, which is legal, one, they do all the training for New Jersey. Um, they just came in and made that develop our anti-bullying specialists just to, we got, um, and you get, uh, the exact protocol, the timelines, how to do the investigation, how to, um, you know, speak to the witnesses, how to speak to the alleged target, how to speak to the alleged perpetrator, all that stuff. So, yeah, there is definitely a protocol. And, uh, you know, I, as the anti-bullying coordinator, I kind of oversee all of the anti-bullying specialists. So it's my job to make sure that we're consistent with that protocol in all seventeen programs.
You're also the administrator? Can you write on to me?
Yes.
For the administration?
So, this is just, um, how far is that?
Sorry?
And the substance abuse numbers, anything they, what they saw?
Yes. Okay. I would say that a lot of the hits, I review all the hit pieces that are submitted. A lot of the hit pieces, I'm just telling you, I'm just sort of, you know, that rule of, you know, stuff, you know, matter of fact, and before this, uh, word, a large number of people come to the FBR side and they have the X, Y, and Johnny said something that, you know, correct, and, and then that investigated for, and that checked, and I would say, I, I don't want to put a number on it, but I would say they would have, uh, if they were in social media. If they don't even have any, no. Definitely being responsible for the investigation.
Would you also, um, don't you present, uh, these situations happening in, um, recreation sports, um, football, that based on, that's something?
And also a lot of, um, this, um, I would, uh, some, some of our, uh, people, uh, those are very, uh, um, we know, we.
Can you tell us about the court's, um, what's happening there?
Uh, so once the report is made, whoever receives the report has, by the end of that day, has to. So that the principal has to inform the anti-bullying specialists, which kind of, uh, they have one day to start the investigation. They have ten days, they have ten days, they have ten days, ten school days to complete the investigation. It has to be seven, five, six, or nine. Depending on what you get, you definitely have to have it sealed. Normally, a lot of times, you do the investigation, guidance counselor, and you tell them that you're, you know, that's, that's, like, you're, you know, so, it's definitely possible. So the Choose to be Nice, it's a national program, fifteen-five college, so at least one time, they're, they're, uh, assigned, they're, uh, shared, uh, to the officer here. It's, uh, they push it, so the FBSS is another push, uh, special, but they're, they're kind of, they're, they're, and, and, uh, they're also asking about, uh... It's more, it's not necessarily, I mean, it's, you know, it's hopefully even good choices to build itself clean, um, I, I ask you to, uh... Thank you.
I, I was just wanting to say that, um, thank you, Mr. Renell. Well done. It's a sneak man in for your, for our, for our sphere. You know, this is, uh, well, not the super-fetid green, green on every, uh, each, uh, most of the nights, uh, having, uh, our violence and bullying. Really, at the end of the day, schools might be causing this. All this, the levels of society are certainly possible with our schools. And, you know, numbers can be manipulated, but we really look at this as an opportunity to address, uh, these societal problems, address these community problems. We have the resources and the means, meaning, uh, social leaders, support specialists, our counselors, our school psychologists, uh, to really throw back, to address these issues and try to work through them. With us, the numbers are the numbers, we don't manipulate them, we are where we are. We think it's important to get accurate numbers, so we know where we are, so that we can get our challenges out of this, uh, societal issue. Thank you all for your attention.
Okay, this time we're going to open the mic for public comment on agenda items.
Thank you, uh, for being so lenient. Um, I just wanted to clear up the, 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 um, voting things for funding, um, as, I guess, anything, okay? Okay, um, I've been providing the, um, the, uh, presentation last week on, uh, funding, um, but I think very much it's extremely important, we need to, we need to, we need to understand everything. Um, so, it's a, it's a fun, um, question, it's, it's, um, it's actually a request. It may be at some point in the future, maybe the next board meeting or in November, another , or, 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 if a presentation could be put together, um, because as we're looking at the numbers, I noticed that what the state says, we should, we should, the amount of money the state says is adequate for us to provide efficient, efficient education system is thirty million dollars less than the budget. Um, and I very much am happy that we try to keep our statistics down, like, by keeping a low percentage, um, tax levying, which has caused submissions to the company and itself, and the time to do the taxes now. I'm, I would really like to understand, um, if the state says for a district that is composed the way we are, if we should be spending about a hundred-and-thirty, a hundred-and-thirty-one million on our full budget, how come we're spending over a hundred-and-sixty? Um, and I, I recognize, because I remember you had said, the vast majority of our budget goes towards salaries and benefits. So I guess I'm just trying to understand and we'd really appreciate if there could be a presentation to explain that thirty million dollar gap. Uh, and I understand that state number is, I guess, a minimum. And not at all am I saying that that's what we should be shooting for. Um, I'm very happy with the education that we're getting. I just would like to understand, is thirty million dollars the big difference? Voting towards the funding that, that is going to be voted in today, and a lot of it is workshops and curriculum and there's, uh, which, well, it is.
I think you're, you're, you're catching the wide net, but it's not about specific that, so.
Okay, well, then, I guess, the specific item that I would like to attach to would be, um, I'll make it this.
You'd like, you'd say this later? You'd like to, it's actually, I would like to jump out, I'm just saying.
Um, no, I understand, but it's, like, the curriculum that's going to be the regular middle of the people, for staff, for, 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 uh, summarizing, that's it. So with regard to that, we have thirty million, we are the nexus of thirty million. And I'm just delighted to be able to understand that gap. So I love that our teachers are getting involved in the professional development because I think there's more volume and there's more likely to. So it's not, I don't have a problem with spending money, I just would like to understand that, so. If, if at some point, same way we could have that presentation on how we, you know, how state calculates that funding, if, if we can, can probably understand that gap between what, what he's budget and when the state says you should budget, that would be good.
I just want to, uh, that some of the states that we have, it's only a, like, speaking of the presentation, it's just, uh, of, 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 uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh...
Well, I mean, hold on, I guess, um, so if I, I assume that, uh, the, uh, transportation, right? So I guess then maybe to understand how they calculate it and if we took out all those things that they want, then we'd be given separate money for our education and it's separate because we actually, um, um, then maybe to understand what our, this national budget minus those things that state not just comes before, which is what they're stepping on before, so we can understand what their numbers are, how much we, we are over, what they consider as the budget for our.
I think you also have to keep in mind, okay, that there are many state managers that, uh, they just not fund, so I would assume that in that number, you're quite not giving that.
But like I said, there's, if it was, if it was five million...
Time out. Public comment, you see your comments, you see all your questions, when you're finished, it will respond. It's all our responses when you finish, you'll be all that, and then you'll close out.
The only thing I wanted, I, I wanted from that, and it really is just for us, just so that parents in Middletown can understand, again, I have no problem with us spending money, I just want to understand why we spend thirty million over what that, their own state owes. Thank you all.
Many others? Being now on at the mic, I'm going to close the public portion on agenda items. Um, Dan, would you take number nine, a proclamation?
Okay.
I think we're just out to talk. No one asked. Everyone who talked.
Okay, the Google proclamation, Alpha Delta Kappa. Whereas two thousand eighteen marks the seventy first anniversary of Alpha Delta Kappa, the International honorary organization of women educators. And whereas the goals of this organization. Goals, which are to recognize African educators foster eternal friendship among educators on world wide scale, promote standards of excellence in educational projects and share the lessons of the British study. And further our social and cultural progress. And whereas women in education constitute. I knew it was on. Whereas women in education constitute a great portion of our network's, our nation's workforce and are constantly striving to better serve their communities in various educational, civic, cultural, and charitable programs. Now therefore, the Middletown Township Board of Education proclaims October two thousand eighteen as Alpha Delta Kappa Month in Middletown, New Jersey, and congratulates the organization on its seventy first anniversary.
Discussion, all in favor? Opposed, abstent. I need a motion to approve the minutes for executive session eighty twenty one, special voting eighty twenty one, executive session eighty twenty nine, and irregular voting of eight twenty nine.
So move.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Opposed, abstent. Okay, the report of the president. Um, as everybody knows, over the summer, we had a board retreat and we came up with board goals. And we had asked board members to write action plans for those goals. In case anybody forgot what the goals are, I have copies for everybody. I don't know what you want to read. These are the actual goals. Okay, the first one was, uh, to continue to refine the committee of the whole process. That one was actually, um, you know, we're still going to do that. Um, continue to refine the committee of the whole process. So, um, I think as a as a whole, the board is going to, um, work on that together. Number two and three, can you vote the, um, you and Pam, Pam and Rob, the group's goal, abstain? So do you want to read the eight minutes and then?
Okay, number two is continue to work with the township to expand our collaboration on shared services and joint projects. This includes continuing to meet monthly with representatives from the township committee and administrative team, increasing communications with the township and developing a mutually beneficial, positive relationship. Monitoring the status of current shared services arrangements to ensure that both parties are enjoying commensurate benefit and responsibility, actively exploring opportunities for new shared service arrangements. And number three is to continue to refine the hybrid approach to the committee of the whole and committee process. Add a policy committee to read through each existing policy thoroughly. Continue to reduce the number of presentations at board meetings by having committee chairs commit to bi monthly meetings where said presentations can be made. Encourage all committee chairs to present a quarterly update to the board in public session. Refine the finance committee model to incorporate a dashboard like concept with key performance indicators updating the board quarterly on all financial matters in a simple, transparent way.
Okay, just for board, what was the one thing that you did wrong, copy the goals? They were the ones we achieved from last year. So Pam read the correct, uh, for number two and three. The number one goal was to initiate the process for the development of a new five year district plan. Okay, strategic plan. Uh, what I need to remind the board is that I know that we're looking at A G Ps to, um, you know, help us look at our overcrowding in our schools. But we need to keep in mind that our goal was to open a strategic plan. And this to treat this strategic plan is a vision for our district with community involvement. So we can't forget that 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 part of the strategic plan. Some of the examples that the strategic plan covers is, uh, long term financial plan, planning, facilities, student success, positive district culture, and a vision for the future. So I don't want to push this goal, um, yet it may stuck with, um, what we're doing on, um, enrollment. It does tie into it, but there's many other things that strategic plan covers. So I just want to make sure that as we go along, we keep in mind that we do need to open up that strategic plan. We do need community involvement because that's what a strategic plan is. What our community sees the future of our district. It's not just the board, it's the fact the board isn't really not involved in that process until the end. So that was goal one. Pam read two and three. You know, you did number four.
Yes, I did number three. It really killed me when you gave out these goals. Like, wait a minute, I didn't do those goals.
Yes, we are. Yes. Yeah, it will be done by September according to our, um. Goals on the board. No, it's not on the agenda. Well, this is time to discuss that. That might be not working.
No, I think I think, uh, no, this one works. No, because some of this is a hybrid approach in terms of how the sub communities are working and the presentation of board meetings. I don't know. I think the public will want to see some of these presentations. I don't know why we would increase the amount of presentations. No, I I get that, but you know, I think some of the questions we've had in the public meetings are, you know, are there meetings in the meetings? How do we know if there's any need for us to discuss? We we do like three updates, but some of these presentations we don't want to see. So in addition, I don't remember talking about a policy committee. So some of these items, I think, are a lot bigger than just showing me now and asking me to hold up.
Well, we could put it off. We could put it off to October. That's not a problem, but that was our charge from our board retreat to come up with these goals and the action plans by September. And there was a lengthy discussion at the board retreat of our board goals. And we gave it to board members to come up with action plans on how we want to.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not arguing that. It's a gun. It had some of those good intentions that the class couldn't. But the action plan here is very specific about not providing presentations during the board meetings. Um, you know, I I don't know. Say, no, yeah, some of the committees we never really have. Someone we have a good frequency on stuff. I I think this is something we need to talk about. I think it's something we need to fully understand what that means because more type of stuff we have. Because you look at a lot of information, the question, how do we get that information?
Well, I know that.
So just so, uh, on the board retreat, just to give some back.
Yeah.
All right, so just to give some background to that particular item, the idea is to try and strike a balance. And so I agree with you that it does bear more discussion because it would be really ironic if we didn't discuss a actual item without discussing it. So I think what's important is that we recognize two things, that that what was behind that goal was the desire to come to these meetings with very full form thoughts to be able to present to board. Because, you know, the stress was this is the meeting of board education in public. And so we should be very, um, together when it comes to presenting at our committees to our body, knowing that the public is going to be watching us. And therefore, to have a lot of presentations, maybe that were performed, begging a lot of questions versus working things out of committee, getting by committee members to say, okay, we're ready to bring this to the full board to discuss it. Which is why it's a hybrid model rather than just going to full committees where I think that's where everything's.
I I understand about the decision making, right? Four board members. There are other presentations that are information. What we have is talking about strategic planning. What are you going to do for a key moment? Haven't seen, now you're not showing a lot of presentations. You're expecting to come to the room and come up with ideas for the district. But I think they're just opposite things. I I think that if you're concerned about public input, I think you have more in the open. So when you go to strategic planning, it's not like starting on square one, which you have, which is a ton of topics. And from the last one I was hitting, it was informative, but it was a lot of stuff. And it it argued that wasn't a really great way to design a strategy. So I my opinion is I think we need to make sure it's consistency and that we understand what this really means and that the public understands what it means. You know, I think that this is tried in the past. It's changed for some reason. I think there's strengths and there's weaknesses, I think, in terms of decision making potentially. I think we make the board's decision or purpose to formulate and not the administration formulate ideas. Or if these are just information, a lot of critical stuff, basically information that the district's telling you, you know, I'm just bringing up just a lot of stuff. I'm just trying to be consistent. So I'm looking at this, this slide, you know, detail. I wasn't just, I wasn't at retreat and it was that. So that was the data.
And I just want to say to the, um, presentations, we're not trying to cut the public gap because.
I didn't say cut it off.
Every important public statement, um, every important presentation is going to still be done in the public. Because we want them to know what's going on at our building. We're trying to have a lot of presentations done first in a committee so that a lot of questions can get answered. Then brought to the whole board at a workshop, because that's what the workshop is. With this presentation. And that that was my understanding.
Yeah, doesn't read like that.
I understand it, and I think that the first three, I'm definitely doing a great job. I'm not, I'm pretty young, but I feel that I know everything that's going on.
I'm just reading the.
You don't have to.
Terms here. I I listen, I don't care how long. I personally don't care how long it's there. Um, the other things too, I think we need to discuss whether these sub communities are. You know, for example, I think how has, um, non board members in these communities allow? I think someone asked about questioning about some community that there's going to be other, um, presidents, non board members and all. So I think it's something like we go through a risk is hybrid. Um, a lot of committee that have certain committees that have, um, other big sign up boards or different sort of way to do it.
Are board committees or board members?
No, I don't know. I know we are, but we're we're changing this, right, to a hybrid model. So we can do whatever we want. So if we wanted to. No, 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 I know. We were increasing the number of committees. We first did this, we agreed there's still committees, we go through a committee. Now we're adding more, right? So you're getting back to, you're getting back to the commission model. So I'm just saying that maybe we should reconsider how these sub communities are devised. These are just things that are coming up from just looking at action plan now, right? So I I just think there's a lot more conversation. When we go to address, that's all I'm saying.
We could.
A lot to read and figure out.
We could vote on this. We could vote on this and typically when we ask, when people are writing goals, ideally for something that they didn't want to write one and get involved.
Well, it doesn't do us right or not, because this is not on the board.
It does because it involves the the, um, board participation and involvement and their thoughts are here.
It looks like it's not on the agenda.
Just because you can use something that you should.
You don't have.
Right, so. I still ask you. It's a chamber session.
I agree with your suggestion. So can we, can we, can we, this is a table, we recirculate the whole list of goals out to the full board? And then we'll come back at our next workshop.
Can we host these?
We don't have a workshop, you know, that we have a workshop. So make sure we discuss it.
Joe, can we host these, like, action plans?
On the plane now. On the portal. No, it's it's not public stuff. Like, we haven't even discussed what you're saying yet. I know, but but we haven't voted on it. This is, it's a board goal. I have a board goal. Just like the district plans, they don't go out into the public to the public to do the district plans. The administration makes the district plan. Every year, the board at the board retreat, we need to be able to vote. That's something that we, the nine of us.
No, I'm sure you can take a look at, if you stay.
Oh, I know.
Typically, it's a comment. Um, and nothing, anybody saying is wrong. Uh, however, you all are elected members of the board. Public has a right to participate, to witness, to observe, to action play. The public doesn't have a right to be part of the votes. So if everything you vote on, the public has a right to weigh into being a part of the committee, to be part of the process. You, the board member, you have a goal established by you governing yourself, amongst yourself. You don't have to have a board meeting to figure out how you want to govern yourself. That's what you're elected to do. That's what that is. That's not what I was asking. I'm saying to be opposed, be rejected, and the action plans before we actually vote, I'm not asking for the public to vote. And in terms of the committees, for some reasons, we don't vote anywhere. So we're for, so hey, participate. It has, as Dave was mentioning, they bring it back to the full board and then we vote. My point was, these are, this is a change. I just was wondering if, you know, what is the agenda topic? It's actually on the agenda. Folks want to come up and they see a line item that they can't understand or whatever, they say, hey, listen, I have this idea. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying to vote. I'm not asking to vote.
If I said, if I presented my comment, with nothing anybody saying is wrong. And that's what I was saying, I was thinking you were the opposite position, which is having more decisive governance self is typically not ever true. And figure out how you want to work together and you adopt either a bylaw to establish standing committees. I can tell you that out of six hundred eleven commissioners that are involved in the public, that's not going to happen. After you, your board vote, effective, that typically needs to be done. A public meeting, a public conference meeting. This is taking into account those you do over the course of the year. And that sounds like why I want you to vote to have a good leadership, have a good leadership.
So there's a, you're going to do a strategic planning extension on other objectives, which is results. So that's what I'm trying to say. It's immediate sound. We're going to ask the public to make up, to devise, um, the fiber plan for us. And at least let me see what we have. And then move on. That's all.
I mean, my point is can we, if if the minister decides, how would the voters be able to vote?
That's what I'm saying. Yes, you can. We have to, we have, if you don't, you have to be involved, be able to decide consistently. And if you like the rules in mind, as you do, it's okay.
But what you're asking is to do is put a comment, but you're also asking to have discussion because you have to turn it up to the goals that the people vote. So when you make more sense to have the discussion, figure out what you don't like in the goal and if there's going to be changes and then put them out to the public. I mean, that would make more sense to me because we're saying we want a discussion. I don't disagree with that.
Yeah, I don't have any discussion because the first I saw, I didn't want to attend this.
Well, we did, just so you know, we did vote on our board vote. And I think it was.
No, I, no, I'm not arguing that. The action plans.
No, we do not. We asked board members to come up with the action plans to achieve the goals that we did.
I fully appreciate that. Could be the big change. I do appreciate the board members. Just a lot of stuff.
We need mine. I just want to know, mine is team built. We really do. Uh, let's put this back on the other side. Thank you, Leslie. Want me to read it? What do I, you want to, I have to. Look, the thing is, you want to see it, okay. I had to do team though. And I came up with three months that I'd like to see us do. One month was in November. So if I never can tell who the board members are or the district board members today, I'd like to get together. Our board and you. And there's a thing in right now, I think he's very young. It's called practice. No, it's scary. Are you a sissy? Don't worry, John's going to have you back. That's the whole thing about it. And we have to. I'm sorry, Danielle, you don't like it?
I don't like it.
A sissy, oh, I'm. I like to see us get together and do another team building thing. All just the fun. I found board related stuff, just about a special life and getting together on a different level. And plus the last one, we can do anything without film. So we're going to have a hot look dinner together. Nothing, I just hope that we build the team from control.
Okay. Moving on. Um, we need a motion for the business administrator, board secretary, number one through four.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Abstent. We need a motion for the report of the. We need a motion for the report of the superintendent, number one and number two.
Go.
In discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number one.
Go.
Okay, now we've got the superintendent's vote.
Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm on my turn.
Good job.
That's quarter.
Okay, number twelve, we need a motion for number one through five.
Go.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Under facilities, we need a motion for number one. Go.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. On policy, we have a first meeting on number one, and a second meeting on number two. So we need to make a motion for number two, am I correct?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, I want to see, the policy, need five, six, nine, it's five on policy, I'm ready.
Go.
Okay, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. On the curriculum, I need a motion for number one through four.
Go.
And, discussion.
Go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Under finance, I need a motion for number one through eight.
Go. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Do we have anything under student activities, smaller, that you can order? Negotiation? Do we need an update on that?
We need an update in person.
Okay, problem. Personnel, we have an agenda on personnel, so on the agenda. Okay, so on the original one, we're doing one through five and seven through fifteen. And on the agenda, we're doing number one, two, five, six, seven, ten, and fourteen through seventeen.
Go.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, I'm abstaining on number ten. On this one, personnel? Oh, okay, number six, we only took the, I moved the whole thing out here, okay, so the rest of number six. We need a motion.
Go.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Okay, all business.
I don't know if it's a business, but um, I guess we had an email on lunch, uh, on the first question. Showing some, um, J. Nottington, uh, stage, time, and I don't know if it was, um, I don't know if other schools had it issued, you know, schools, I think, or some, or that, but it's like, did any, any news on, doesn't sound like vendors, I'm going to say, I think it was like.
Dr. George actually went to every school to check out the lunch times. The principals, yeah, the principals from our, we were told, were in every lunch room checking out, you know, that issue, um, showing that it wasn't going to happen. Um, in the beginning, there were some questions because of the new POS system, that the employees were having a hard time, you know, getting, um, used to working it. Now this, you have to remember, this would have happened no matter what, new lunch company, old lunch company, POS was applying to change this year. So, um, the same employees, we kept all the employees from, um, Aramark, they're working for Ritz, it's the same employee, it's just training of the POS. And I think in the beginning, one principal said that, yeah, there was a couple, the one principal said that one day when we got the letter, it said that there was, um, overcrowding, there happened to be a, um, program given with our peer leaders. And our peer leaders happened to be in that particular bunch, which made up the overcrowding for that particular day, but, you know, they were doing a, a program for underclassmen, so, um, that happened there. I think, um, Dr. George was my thing, I think he went to every school, but.
The middle school.
Yeah.
Uh, not just we, we as a team, we just, we, 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 we know what you're talking about, sometimes we don't, we know that we're, we're, I, I.
Oh, no, no, I'm just saying, you know, if you're.
So we responded to that, just, I'm just saying, I was, I didn't, actually, we, you know, your program, Mr. Actually, he self responded, but it was investigated by us. And it's, uh, sometimes there's confusion as to why students were sitting in the hallways, rather than there's not a seat for students. Those are two different, and that was a, uh, it was the, the understanding from the person who said that wasn't, was a seat, was that students were inflexible, so were choosing to sit in other areas of, 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 of.
I think the first thing, if I get back now, all four of Fraser, or, are going to lunch virtually at the same time, actually, three of them are going to lunch, juniors to seniors are going to lunch at the same time. Freshmen have a advisory, so freshmen are getting there half an hour later, because their lunch time is a bit shorter, so the freshmen have a hard time adjusting to getting their food, finding a seat, and there's three other classes ahead of them. And so I think it is some problems, and my daughters had some issues, but, you know, my personal opinion is, is, you know, I kind of saw it, so that sometimes, then I, I present my daughters, and, you know, now one of them runs, the other one doesn't, she makes her own, too.